Okay, I'll call the September the ninth, two thousand twenty council meeting to order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and as your republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as all.
Thank you. Chairman Banks is not here today, so I'll try to run the meeting best possible. Okay, at this time, we'll close out of the council meeting and we'll enter into the public hearing for the Wiltlake County budget and the solid waste budget. Daryl, will do you first?
I believe the budget's been presented. It's been passed through the solid waste work, very minor changes. Any questions?
Is the public have any questions for far as the solid waste budget? If not, I'll go back to the council. Is there anything you'd like to ask?
I have none.
Bill, Tim?
No.
Okay. Well, no. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll ask for if there's any from the public, anything you'd like to ask on the Wiltlake County budget? Not being counsel?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Nothing at this time. Okay, that being, we'll close out of the public hearing and we'll go back into the council meeting. Mark? You come up and state your department, what you're asking for.
Mark, start it then. Name this department. I'm requesting additional appropriations in the amount of ten thousand dollars in the janitorial budget. Line item two zero 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 two. Balancing the fund as of right now is less than eighteen dollars. Two of the mitigating factors are earlier in the year, we had to replace the courthouse floor scrubber. It had several failed parts on it and it was so old that they don't even manufacture the parts anymore. So I was forced to replace that machine. That was around five thousand dollars. And then, of course, this the additional expenses we've spent on the COVID cleaning supplies and such, especially early on. So I'm going to run short this year, finish the year off.
There's, is there any money in any other place in your budget to roll out from one to the other?
I don't know if it can come out of the
Or can we do that, Jana?
Transfer.
The building maintenance cannot come out of that. Equipment repairs. It's going to be real close, if not short by the end of the year for that account. Really, the only one I'm going to have extra in, and that was, by design, was the forty one hundred. That was four one zero zero one, but that was equipment, capital off-lease. I don't know that can come out of that.
You said you were going to have extra money in that by design?
Well, we had the original request in that account was for the maintenance van and the tractor, replace the tractor. But there wasn't enough in there to do both. You were going to fund, the council was going to fund it later on, which they didn't. So part of that money was kind of earmarked towards replacing one of the tractors, so.
Jana, is that money usable? Can it be transferred?
Well, I, I mean, he's, you could, yeah, the additional appropriation, there's, there are funds there to do that. Transfer wise, again, that's really, I don't know, he has money already.
It can come up. I think what we're asking is can it come out of the capital off-lease?
Is it allowed to come out of that account to cover this request rather than county general? And how much is in there right now? He had the count, what's the count number?
Four, again, forty one.
He doesn't have, he doesn't have a capital off-lease, he has an equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's only ninety six hundred. So.
Mark, have the COVID expenses been documented so that they can be added to the commissioner's request? And that will then be reimbursed to county general?
Yes. They have been submitted.
So do you know approximately, is that about five thousand, three thousand?
Are we fairly sure we'll get that back?
Three thousand dollars. But I was banking on coming back to my account.
Comes to county general, I mean.
What was the, trying to get a grasp on that maintenance account, what was the, or the equipment account? What was the projected cost that you were going to have to buy a tractor that you're short now with only nine thousand dollars in there? Is that what you didn't get, or what didn't you get?
I don't know what the amount was I didn't get, I don't have that figured.
What piece of equipment that you, did you not get that that money is still there and you don't anticipate using it?
The piece of equipment was the tractor replacement, I think that was at thirty five.
It was at thirty five and you only ended up with the nine thousand six hundred in there?
Yes, that is correct. Forty one, forty one thousand was what was requested. Some of that forty one thousand is, is projection on, or projected increase from thirty five.
So I do recall a discussion about only funding a portion of that and then Mark coming back later on to see where the county stood. My question, my next question is is the life of the new scrubber long enough to make it a capital expenditure?
I don't know what's required in lifespan.
I think it's seven years on that.
If we did, if that expense was transferred to this
Janitor supply account?
No, if it, if the expense were taken out of janitorial supply and moved to equipment, then we make a transfer.
So, so you, okay, so you would rather, so you're wanting to see a claim adjustment? We would not, we would move it out of janitorial supplies and move it into the equipment?
Since that is equipment and the other equipment hasn't been purchased and won't be.
So that would bring up five thousand of the ten thousand that he needs, correct?
And three thousand will be reimbursed next year?
Well, as soon as we send it into the state, within ten to fourteen days of sending checks out.
Into the anticipation that it will be this calendar, this fiscal year?
Yes.
We don't have to, we're, we're going to start working with, on that this week because Jana and commissioners and Lori Shipman and Amy Biggs are going to get together and we've got to get together. Everybody's got a little bit of COVID expense that we have to, to send in. Then the commissioners also have the courthouse security and then I'll be reporting then some other issues that we have.
So essentially, if we make the scrubber an equipment purchase and we receive the three thousand dollar reimbursement, we're talking about two thousand dollars here, which you would need additionally.
Well, and I was just going to say, just because I don't know everything is, what, what is, is the carpet instructor that was paid out of janitorial supplies, is that an actual equipment?
Yes.
So that's another three thousand dollars right there that I could do.
And that would spend your equipment budget and save these funds for janitorial.
Yes.
And that should be close enough that we could just see, you can admire with that and come back if you need maybe another thousand or whatever the difference would be in what you're asking for. But I imagine the ten thousand just kind of a guesstimate anyway, isn't it?
The exact number is eighty two hundred, so, but yes.
That works for you?
Tim, would you like to put that in motion?
Let me ask a question first.
Okay.
Do we need a motion or does that just an issue between the auditor's office and Mark and the changing?
That's kind of, yeah, that's kind of an issue between us because we're not asking for any additional.
So.
Or just decline an additional appropriation and work it out a different way. And you two will work it out, so, okay.
Mark, before you leave, we're going to move on down, you're requesting to buy some chairs.
Okay.
We might as well do that while you're up here.
Okay. I was asked to look into if we could find some chairs, some larger chairs for some of the meeting rooms. I got with two suppliers, I don't have the name of the company. I got with two suppliers and had them close a couple of different style of chairs. Both advise that we steer away from chairs without arms. They highly recommend that you have chairs with arms for safety and liability reasons. So those are the two quotes you have, KDA sixty two seventy eight and Heinem's. Where's that?
So just over three.
I know you're sort of, where is Mark? There, well, four, two, okay. We're going to put some in this room, some in meeting room C, some in meeting rooms A and B. So we had coverage throughout the building would be available as needed. Instead of trying to buy one set, move them all around the building to accommodate different meetings.
Mark, what about downstairs? In the meeting room downstairs?
A and B.
And B, you guys?
Sure. Commissioners talked about this and we came up with the conclusion that truly rather than spending for four or five different chairs, we, we just wanted to put one chair for the, this floor, one chair for the bottom floor for the meeting rooms. And then they're going to be, not going to be used all the time, so rather than spending twice as much as what we need to spend, our recommendation would be to just get two of the bariatric chairs.
Is there any quality difference to justify the chairs in the KDA as opposed to Heinem's?
They were both rated at six hundred pounds. One was a little fancier, padded arms instead of the little thin arms on it. The padded arm.
I guess my question to you, George, do you think that's enough?
Yes. We've, we've talked about it quite a bit and we just feel it's proper to do it that way rather than spending money that's going to sit around. That way, you, you would have had, A and B is really one room, you're going to have, you'd have two chairs in there and I, I think it's proper to do it the way we are, then we're covered with ADA also at that point.
This is scratch going to be taken out of COVID.
I, I don't know if we can do that for this. It'd be hard to relate it to COVID.
So we're talking about one pair of chairs?
Yeah, two bariatric chairs.
Yeah. So.
Which are the, which would be the nine eighty, eighty, nine hundred and eighty dollars nations? That's four.
I don't.
So we're talking about five hundred dollars.
Yes.
There's, there's got to be a difference in the quality of what we're looking at for this much of a price difference. I mean, this is, one of them is twice what the other quote is.
We brought them both in. We had them side by side, we compared them.
I'm not going to sit here and say there wasn't a difference, but you certainly couldn't tell.
So you would just go with Heinem's?
Yes.
I make a motion that we purchase two chairs, combine and printing?
Okay, we have a first, we have a second.
Okay.
Okay, we have first and second. Any further discussion?
Do we need to designate a model or not? We just?
I think it says from Heinem, so.
And you on the top was right from the quote, two of them, right, George? Okay.
Any further discussion? All of them favor, raise your right hand. All of them oppose the same, let it show that it has favorable for all members present.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, yeah.
What's your choices? General?
Um, I don't.
Is there any money left in that equipment fund we were just talking about with the courthouse? Is there five hundred dollars left in there?
Because I think I was transferring eighty two hundred dollars over.
There should still be five hundred there, right?
But technically, this is a capital expenditure if that allows it to come from a different place.
I mean, the commissioners also, and they are really, that's what they have.
I would suppose we take it from the commissioners.
Yeah, I think commissioners pay for those too. You got that much money over there, yeah?
They have it, you know.
Well, the other account though, we don't have it earmarked.
Okay.
The other account though is money that's going to just revert back into county general. So it's just a matter of time before it comes back to us because there's no plan to spend it for anything. It's not needed, it's not budgeted. So if we can use that account, we're just sidestepping it, coming back to county general, unless you're planning on trying to uncover that for next year. But I mean, it doesn't sound like you are because you already put in the budget for the forty one thousand, right? So.
It's fine either way.
So, that okay? Just take it out of what's left over, the five hundred dollars?
Take it out of the four.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Jeff, four H?
We're in July, guys asked first to come back when we had a little more solid numbers after fair. I gave you a little report on fairs. That's fantastic turnout for, for the situation that everyone was in. Had no incidents, had great, you know, great group of kids, obviously with the support program in general and it really showed that we we were able to pull off what no other county in Northern Indiana would pull off. So we were able to pull off almost everything that we normally would do during the fair, just on a scale backs situation. Should have gotten a copy of our, kind of our numbers. I did, we did the year to date and then I did a projection kind of with what we would normally have for September and October to get us to the end of our fiscal year. On November first is our
T E real estate.
Year. Kind of a timeline that we're, we've got for the year.
Yeah, we didn't get that, so if you have any specific numbers, it would be helpful, like general. Can we just get copies made real quick?
Do you have it? Is that it?
Yeah.
Here's another one.
It's the same, is it?
Uh, should be two pages.
Okay.
Yeah.
One, he done one expense. Apologies on that, I thought I didn't really know. Come back to that one a little. You had also asked, we talked a little bit about county appropriations last month as well. Working with Ron Meyer who's been involved with Ford's program for a long time. And we did go back and kind of dig out numbers as far as county appropriations back into the nineteen ninety nine was as far back as we could find. Those numbers started in the sixty thousand dollar range, got it tied in sixty eight thousand in two thousand two. And then in two thousand five, pardon my, remember, there was maybe a change in tax purposes or taxes at that time. And it dropped down into the thirty thousand dollar range and this last few, three or four years actually lasted about five, six years. We've been in the twenty two thousand dollar range. So those are the kind of the numbers that we were looking at for the county appropriations. And to get back kind of the financial overview, we haven't been able to cut a lot of our expenses for the year. A week, it's good for the numbers. We do have some plans for some additional fundraisers till this fall. We're doing a lasagna dinner this month. Next month is our fall festival, to go along with it, we're going to do all growth, try to raise a little extra funds there. We've continued to do first Fridays, saw ice cream for Fridays and that's again, been an extra source of income for us this year. But I guess that's kind of where we stand on those, that situation as far as what we're trying to do.
So, so I haven't been on here this long, but you know, go back to two thousand. The county tax purse appropriation was sixty three, now it's clear down to twenty. Who sets that or how do they, how do we come up with what they get?
I believe you guys said.
Used to have a tax rate. And we changed that rate, that was dropped down.
So we lowered the tax rate?
Yeah.
That goes along with the sheet that I gave you guys at the last meeting. It gave you like the rundown of the max levy.
Mm-hmm.
It went out of the sheets. So you guys can change that however you see fit. But you can only work with a certain, you know, a certain amount.
Right.
If you have a max levy. So it's really to you guys, that's why I made that to you guys to just determine what, you know, how much levy you wanted to go to each one for each entity.
You've done a pretty good job of making up the difference.
What's that, Bill?
They've done a pretty good job of making up the difference.
Yeah. Jeff, are there specific grants available? Have you?
We've looked at, so after our last meeting, Lori had worked with United Way and what else? Community Foundation to see if there was anything available there. We weren't able to qualify for any of those. Tom had given the information to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. I called and talked with them. Most of the money that they had or all of the grants that they had were all for either for-profit organizations or arts and, arts and music type events. I looked really hard at their application and I was really going to have to stretch to try to figure out how we could work into that niche. So we have looked at several different places and haven't been able to find anything. There were some loans out there, but they're all loan paybacks, so really didn't get us any really net gain.
And National four H doesn't do anything to?
So kind of we look at the, now you've got the numbers, hard numbers in front of you. Get some of the highlights on the, on the expense page. Our utility for the year, again, projected out October, our September and October will be down about sixteen thousand. A big part of that is the, you know, during the fair, we only had just, you know, each one barn basically running each day. So we were able to cut back on the amount of, of the big fans and everything that ran during the fair also. When kind of the COVID hit and we had to shut down on rentals, we backed off all the air conditioning and all of those kind of things. Trying to do and conserve as much as we possibly could. Our concessions expense was down about twenty thousand, almost thirty thousand for the year. The other expenses are fairly well in line. We are, you'd asked last month, Hank, Hank Thor that had asked, or Tom had asked about the marketing. I did dig into that a little more to see why that number was as high as it was. And that actually includes our program books, but then also all of our cups and food boats. Put them into that marketing expense because we have marketing income to cover all of those. So those were kind of offset as, as corresponding accounts that way. As we get down to the bottom of that sheet, we had the ice cream trailer, we bought, we bought an ice cream trailer and then we ended up buying a new ice cream machine in January or February before the COVID hit. Planning to do basically ice cream every other week all summer long. So we had those additional expenses this year. And then with our other meals and ice cream that we've done, we had some additional expenses there at the bottom. The big numbers are on the second page when we get to the income. That's where we've kind of taken a, a pretty big hit. Our concession sales income during just the week of the fair was down ninety two thousand dollars. Our building and facility rentals was down nearly ten thousand. Our fair week entertainment, we still, still didn't want to make about fourteen thousand dollars off of the week of entertainment, but we were down, you know, from twenty thousand from last year, so we're six thousand down there. You see in there, there's a line item for the street sign sale. We've got all the street signs on the fairgrounds. And we do that once every five years, so that was an income we had in two thousand nineteen that we wouldn't, didn't have this year. And then down at the bottom, we've got our memorials and donations. That number was up this year, we had a pretty significant donation from an estate to help pay for the rest of our handicap accessibility ramp that we put in and do the railing on it. So that was a, a pretty, pretty significant increase. And then you see there at the bottom, the extra income that we've got off of our meals and, and ice cream sales and stuff that we've done this year. Leaving us a net of, when we compare year to year of eighty eight thousand dollars short in this year compared to where we were at last year. We had done a fairly decent job on setting back some funds to do some projects, to do a We had done a fairly decent job on setting back some funds to do some projects, to do a renovation of, start to do, put money back for doing a renovation of the 4H center. But we're gonna have to dig into that pretty hard. Probably dig into that money pretty hard. And then we'd also had plans and the money set back to hire an executive director for the fairgrounds to manage the fairgrounds. And that's, we're happy to eat into most of that money as well at this point. So I can, I can give you an update. There's any questions on, on the numbers that you see there or anything I can help clarify?
How are you guys overall as an organization? Are you, as far as for your financial health?
I would say with the extra money we have back, we're probably okay, but we're gonna be really tight. We're not gonna be able to do any type of repairs or improvements. We've got a couple of buildings that are starting to get in pretty rough shape that we really need to take some look at. The beef barn is probably the biggest one. The one wall in the beef barn, I guess, was built on top of a peat bog. And that peat bog over the last 50 years has started to disintegrate and that one wall has dropped about 18 inches from the center of the barn to the corner. So we nearly need to look at that. The barn itself is structurally sound, but we just have to, basically we need to jack up the one side of that barn and replace it. Lori, I think Lori's our treasurer and I think she could probably give you a better idea financially where we're at.
Yeah, we're kind of on survival mode right now. So like we have some things that we will not be able to hold another fair without repairing, but we've put all of those repairs on hold like at the very end of fair. Large freezer down below the hill that we store all of our food, they've died. And so we have not gotten that fixed. We have not gotten anything done because that makes sense that right now we can't budget out. But we also can't hold another fair until we get that fixed. So some expenses like that, some of the upkeep that we have to do right now is on hold. Because everything is so tight and we kind of have to see how things go. If things get shut down again statewide and our rentals stop, that's gonna hit us really hard because we're rented out like every weekend for the rest of the year. We rely on that income. Campsite rental is something that hit us really hard this year because nobody camped at fair because their animals aren't there every day. And so little things like that are compounding. So we put kind of a spending freeze on everything that we've done. We have new windows sitting there waiting for us to put them into the main concession stand to increase energy efficiency and to fix some hazards that we have. But we've even put that on hold even though we've already got everything lined up just because we're trying to be as conservative as possible.
What would it take to get you healthy?
To get us healthy, $40,000, $50,000 would get us healthy in the fact that we could do the necessary repairs to make this functional and keep us afloat.
George, you see any inquiry that we could come up with some of that?
At this point, I really don't. Since it's a tax rate itself, hard to deal with that.
And I think we need to keep in mind that next year's budget and the following year, there's probably not going to be funds available at all, just the tax rate. And that may still change.
We, you know, typically we're in a, we're in a pretty good situation to be able to take, you can get from year to year. Just been this year, like everyone's ran into, it's just been, it's been rough. And the big hit for us was the concessions. You know, not having the concession sales, sale during the week of the fair. A lot of families came, you know, they came the day that their kids showed. Without the animals being there all week, they didn't have a reason to be there every day and, and eat and drink and all of those kinds of things. So that's, that's, that was the huge hit we took. Rely on, on fair week for about 75% of our income through the year.
It'll wash the income off the dinners up on top of the hill too.
Yeah. Also into that concessions, also into that same concession file.
And on top of that, of course, all the COVID expenses that everybody has, you know, the additional, we had to hire additional cleaning suits over the fair weeks to help disinfecting everything, keeping those bathrooms on that rotational basis. And then all the additional cleaning supplies and sanitizer. We had sanitized tables, sanitized golf carts, sanitized flares, sanitized the show bar and we had to add all of those expenses on.
Can they turn any of that in?
Well, they're kind of a separate entity.
It isn't a taxing unit.
So, but, but what my thought is, is there's a possibility that with the restrictions that we've got on that COVID funds that we've got that the county has given, there's a possibility we could turn that money into them. We can get a pre-approved. I mean, all we can do is ask if we could ask and if we could get something pre-approved to use those monies for. But right now, we're not sure where we stand on that, but I, I think that's the only possibility that I can truly think of that. Because it is COVID related. There's no doubt about that. Yeah. So I guess, you know, we can talk to, you know, Jana can talk to Lori and Amy and see what their thoughts are on that. That's about the only thing that I can think of right now. There could be a possibility with that kind of money.
Well, that's a pretty important thing to this community. I think we need to do something to keep them going.
I suggest we table this till next month. Give them a chance to see what we can find out there. It'll give us a chance now that we got this in front of us to determine, maybe there's a way we can help. Best we can do. So we'll make sure that you're on the docket for next month.
Have you guys put your budget together for next year? Is that something you've already done or you're working on it?
We have the sales, but we don't have it approved yet. Our financial year ends October 30th. So that's our, that's what we do here in the next couple of weeks is to
Get through the heading of the fair and then start looking it up.
Those might be really some helpful numbers. If you can kind of, I mean, getting close enough to try to maybe come up with just an idea. Email that to us and along with maybe what you have as far as unspoken 4H funds or what you do have available right now too, what those numbers are.
Okay. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next, additional appropriation request for software, Laurel and Jana.
So this, we talked about this at your previous meeting and you said you'd like to pay for it for this year. Again, I hopefully am gonna meet with Amy and Laurie soon. I know the commissioners have an internet project that they're working on, but some of this may be able to be COVID expensive as well because people are able to look up their bills online without having to come in and receive it or obtain it from us. So and Lori, when I talked to her, she did say that it might be something that could definitely be covered. So I sent her the information and I'm waiting to hear back from her. Anyway, so here's additional appropriation for our tax software that we requested at the last meeting. It's been advertised, ready to go. I think we're gonna start working with them tomorrow. But this is the initial conversion cost and to purchase this software. Do you have any questions?
Can I make a motion? We approve the additional appropriation request.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Hey, Bill, second is? Any further discussion?
Will you have the money in there now to get that paid for and done and everything?
Yeah, there's enough money to be able to do the additional preparation to pay.
You know, if I remember right, this will let you and Laurel talk on the computer now instead of going around like you are now. I mean, you guys, you're linked together better on the computer, right?
Any further discussion?
Let me just say that we directed them to go ahead and begin this process at our last meeting, so.
Where are we taking that on?
I did it on the county general. That was my budget, I believe.
Okay, all of them in favor? Raise your right hand. All of them opposed, the same. Let it show. Next member voted, one's out.
But it's just
Okay, next is max levy review. Yeah?
Okay, so each year, so the DLGF said that we, the council has to review the max levies of each taxing unit within the county. It was a lot of papers, so I didn't print it off for everybody, but you can get it on their website if you guys want to review it more. But it's just, it's just us pretty much, you guys looking at it saying if you would recommend any changes to their max levies, which normally we do no recommendation, no recommendations or changes. And I just have to note it in the minutes and it's enough to send it to the DLGF.
Yeah, I think everybody got that.
Yeah, right at that. Nothing needs to be done on that.
Correct.
Yes, we need to approve the, next thing would be to approve the 2021 council meeting schedule.
Make a motion to approve this presented.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all of them in favor, raise your right hand. All of them opposed, the same.
If we could back up for just a second with the levy issue, could you take maybe just a couple of minutes and explain exactly what that, what that is to the people that are watching the meeting or that might come back and watch the meeting? And what that's, what we're, what we're discussing there and what that means to the county?
Okay, so it says the county fiscal audit reviews, review of levy limits and tax reductions from credits. So pretty much this is you guys looking at all the taxing units in the county and saying, okay, this is what DLGF recommends their max levy, which the max levy is what they would be collecting in tax dollars for, for next year. And say, you know, and kind of looking at their budgets and saying, okay, do they need more? Do they need less? Are they good? Which normally, because the DLGF gives, gives the estimate and you guys have the decision on whether or not you want to make a change to it. So it's pretty much the tax levy is what they're collecting in tax dollars for next year.
And that's for all the taxing units in the county?
The schools.
Got anything else?
Nope, not yet.
And then I, yeah, I just have to have it in the minutes that you guys make no recommendations or changes to those. So it's up to you if you want to wait.
Let's table it to next month. Can we do that? That way I'll be here. Can you do that or not?
I don't know. He's, okay, he said this is a reminder that this process must happen. But I emailed him and said, well, we don't, we don't normally. He said it can wait until September. So I think this is one of the honestly first years that it used to be like the non-biener reviews, they got rid of it. This is the new thing they're doing. If you remember non-biener reviews.
Well, I'll leave it up to you.
Can I make a motion that we do not recommend any changes to the max tax levy?
First, is there a second? Tom seconded it. Oh, he did second.
Yeah.
Tom seconded. Any further discussion on this? If not, in favor, raise your right hand. All of them opposed, the same. Let it show the all. Yes. George, Commissioners report.
I just got a few things. First thing we did yesterday, we approved our ADA plan. It was presented by ERI. And we contracted for them to be a consultant for us. The American Disabilities Act, the county has to have a formal plan and it affects our crossroads loans that we get or fund, funding that we get from indot. If we don't have that ADA plan in, in effect, then we don't get the crossroads funds, which is millions of dollars every year that we get. And Brandon is getting ready to apply for another grant for the highway. So we did get that approved. Any questions about that at all? Mercury Wireless, we're working with Mercury Wireless right now to provide wireless internet broadband services for the whole county at this point. We're going to, we've applied for the CARES Act funding for the COVID and we got approved for that. We got formal approval for that, which would be $695,000. We're asking for that. And that would be for, it's gonna be two different phases. They'll start with, there's 10 different towers that they're going to use right now. And it covers all the way from South Whitley, goes all the way to Quirribusco. What coverage, what it doesn't cover, they're going to do a phase two. Then the phase two will be any areas after phase one that aren't covered, that they'll, they'll start coverage there. Like it's not a, it's not a cure-all. It's, the speed is normal speed for someone for, I think it's like $59 a month is what they're going to charge at this point anyway, is 30 down and three up. But it's, if you pay the $89, you can get 100 down and, and five up, which is, is good enough for any streaming for, for people that have three or four kids in the house. It's, it's, it's good enough, but it isn't fiber optic. We're trying, we're still trying, we're working with MetroNet. We're working with some other companies to provide fiber optics to help us in that. But I think it's a, it's a multifaceted approach that we're looking at this right now to try to, to make sure that Whitley County has the best of, of internet service that we can and it'll, it'll spring us forward because that's one thing that we lack right now. And, and I think it's, it's needed. So just want to let you know that we, we are looking at using those funds for that. We'll present to you, again, Jana and I and Amy and Lori are gonna be meeting together and we'll present the funding that we're, we're asking for, for that your next meeting and make sure then we can apply for that. Once, once we get the invoices, we send invoices to the state. The state will actually pays that invoice or pays us back within 10 to 14 days. So it's, it is an outlay for us, but we'll get the money back right away.
Will this cover only areas that currently don't have?
No.
So?
So it'll, it'll cover pretty much all of the county. The way it looks right now, we're going to, since we're putting in the 695,000, we're going to stipulate that, that all service is at least a 25 minimum of 25 down service so that they can't just give us service at, at one or two and say, well, you've got service. So we're putting in stipulations there that anything that they do, they're gonna have to have cer- certain standards. If it doesn't meet those standards, then they'll deal with that on phase two. But we're still working with our MC. We're working with MetroNet. We're trying to do whatever we can to make sure that our residents have the best broadband services they can get. Any questions on that at all? Bariatric chairs, we took care of. Varyetrick chairs, we took care of. We did have the land that we're, we're looking at purchasing out at the Armstrong property. We did, GME did testing, soil testing on that. The soil testing came in. There were a couple of areas that were questionable. We had Performance Services take a look at that. And we had the architect look at that. And I don't think there's going to be any issues with, with the land. So now we can go forward with that. We haven't done anything with that at this point. But soil testing really came up favorable for this. And that will be, I think we were going to take the 100,000 out of the jail tax for next year. And that's going to be 100,000 for the next three years to pay for that. Any questions on that at all?
So that begins in 2021?
Yes.
And that all comes out of jail tax.
Yeah.
Every year.
Yeah.
When George and you say you consulted with the architect.
Well, in our case, that.
Do we know what we're building?
No, well, that's what part of this is, we have to know where we're going to build. And then we're doing a need study right now. And that will tell us more than anything. But what they're doing right now is if, if we plan on putting a jail and a work release facility in there, are there any issues with the soil testing that we've got right now? And that's what we're looking at. We're just having them say that, that there are, there are no restrictions on that.
Thank you.
This afternoon or this morning, the commissioners are going over to the jail, the jail and, and community corrections are looking at some type of a sterilization unit. And it's pretty expensive. We're just going to look at it. They're doing a demonstration on it. Not sure where that's going to go. That probably could be COVID money, but we're just, we have to be very careful with our COVID money right now because we're, we're getting close on that 1.1 billion between the jail or the broadband and then the, the port entrance over there. That's going to be 700, $950,000 right there just for those two projects. I think Dale Book is gonna, would like to make a little bit of a presentation. We're looking at using $5,300 worth of funds, funding for a phase one project for environmental, environmental studies. I don't know, Dale, do you want to talk about?
Yeah, so we're a couple, a couple products building on 600. Just, just on our side of the tracks and 600. Pretty rough building. It's got some pretty serious fire complications and that would just made it hard to get a new apartment. It's been for sale for quite some time. We finally have several folks that are actually interested in purchasing. One thing we wanted to do was get the, a phase one, a complete phase one. There's a phase two done on the planning area several years ago. So, but in general, overall, there's one for the entire site and then do it in the EDC's name. So I can then share that with any potential buyer. We've gotten that lined up with a company called SMP, working with leadership who's got a lot of expertise in this. Also, some really good connections at Indian Brown Fields. And that, that complete study is $5,300. And I was looking to take care of that on the outside.
That would be on, out of seated onsite offsite.
That, the potential for that building. So first of all, there's, I think, only three or four people actually working on products. The home is in about 30,000 square feet in space. The, the project that, this is the first one we're looking at. We completely reduced it to about $2 million developing for a 500. If you went over there, you'd get, you'd have to have a strong stomach to kind of see all the ways. So we're very, we're very excited about what happened.
These jobs will be county average wages or more, which is right around $19 an hour as an average.
So at this time, you're asking for us to prove 5,300, but when that study's done and it points out what's going to have to be done, then are we going to be, are we going to be asked to pay for the cleanup of this? And where's coupled products? And how do we recoup this $5,300?
Couple of products. They have reduced, if the sale was through at the price that they offered, they reduced the, they're asking the price by almost $100. So they're basically wanting the buyer to clean up the building. So as far as regrouping the 53, I'm looking at that like investment to then get the building back into usable packs, passable to be.
I think that's what we're looking to is, is not, you know, the couple of product situation wasn't a good situation, but going forward, at least we can make that a, a nice building. It'll be a great building when they get it through and we'll have 85 employees, additional employees making decent money. And that's what we're looking for right now.
Do you anticipate coming for tax abatements for this homeowner?
I don't think so. Okay. Doing some type of assistance and working with tax or the TIP, turning on and off on what we can do out of that. So out of TIP funds and our taxes.
We try to stay away from tax payments more. And then there may be some training funds that we're dealing with also, but we'll all be TIP funds. That's all I have.
Wait, Dale's here. Dale, do you want to give the console and public an update on the Larwell?
Well, yeah, there's two things. So we're trying to take care of Red Star, Red Star manufacturing out there. It's in trying to expand and higher vision. Subject sewer issues. They're not being able to do that. We've been looking for months now at a solution for that. Tomorrow night we'll present several of this from our well council. A proposal to run a sewer line, a small line, just from where it stops, basically a 30 up to Red Star. And they require several of the residents along that to, to discuss that. But that's probably going to be a $70,000 expense. To do that project, we look at a more comprehensive one that we can maybe potentially put something in place to develop the land that's out there. That's part of the TIP now. But I'm thinking that that could still take a while, but much more expensive. There's no money in the TIP. So our proposal is going to be tomorrow night. So it's just run that lower cost line. And we'll pay for that out of seeded funds.
What, what we got, what we're going to ask for is we've got that $200,000 that's going to be reimbursed to seed it onsite offsite for next year. And that 70,000 would kind of be offset by the 200,000 that redevelopment is paying us back.
Are we planning on paying for each one of those homeowners that are on that line? They're going to be able to hook into it? If we're running, I mean, I know before we talked about the viability of this project for other development out there. But if we're running this strictly for one company, that's different, that's a little bit different than what we talked about before.
The, the people along the line will have to, they'll have to tap in. There's no, it's in our ordinances that they have to tap in if it goes past their residence. But we're hoping that Larwell will help them either with some kind of a payment plan or something like that. That's why they're trying to meet with Larwell right now to, to see what they'll do to help that.
Why would we commit to helping Five Star with those funds if we're not going to help everybody that we're forcing to tap into it? I mean, we're helping one person and we're forcing other people.
Well, the issue that we've got with Five, with Red Star is that they, we made a commitment to them to make sure that there would be some kind of a sewer system going to them. Or they were going to leave, they were, you know, they were bought out by a large company. And the large company was actually looking at and is looking at maybe moving into Whitley County also. And, and again, it's, it's something that we're just looking, you know, it's an opportunity for us. And yes, we're spending money, but seeded money is economic developed money. And, and you know, that's, that's truly what seeded money is for is, so that's for situations like that.
They're wanting to add on and crave more jobs. So that was another reason for trying to take the sewer line up or to keep them here in Whitley County.
I, I understand. I just, you know, when the project was brought to us before and talked about it was with the understanding that it was going to benefit a potential industrial park and other pieces of property and other businesses. And now we're talking about specifically one person or one business. So that's why there's.
That may be not necessarily true because we're looking at how, how big we size the system. And if we just, if right now we just go to Red Star with a larger system, then we can, we can go from there. We'll be able to, to add additional, and I don't know how many it'll be, but we can add additional to that afterwards. But right now it's going to be, go directly to Red Star because it's going to be, that TIP area, it's going to, it's going to take years and years and years to get anything built up in that TIP area to get money to do anything. So at this point, we're probably looking at regional sewer district is going to have to help on that too.
And is there land in the TIP between Red Star that would be on the line? So smaller businesses?
Privately owned right now.
It's, yeah. But there is potential for smaller businesses to go in that would be able to be under the capacity of this line?
Right. But it's not anybody's wishing to own land like we did for Red.
Thank you, Dale.
I mean, just one other thing. County received a $250,000 of, or, or COVID related expenses for small businesses. Because the EDC has revolving on, we were able to fly that, we'll actually manage and administer that. So we've already had several companies inquire about that. If you know of any small business that's, that's COVID related expenses, this, these are loans from 5,000 up to 25,000. Paid in three years. First two years payments, the third year it's kind of given us a brand. Know of anybody, any company that's struggling, where anything to help, um, all the EDC.
Mr. Chair, I was just wondering, is that just for for-profit businesses or not?
I guess it's just for profit.
Thinking about 4H on that, that's.
Is there a minimum number of employees or budget?
Maybe not just one is the minimum for 5,000 or 25,000. It's four and it's 50% of the wages have to be lower to moderate in time. But whether or not that number is $1,000. So a lot of folks will, will fall behind.
Anything else, Dale?
No, thank you.
George? Okay. I think before we go to the minutes, Scott, you have any updates for the console or how things are going?
Um, regards to COVID, I think that it's pretty steady. Not seeing any large surgeries, we're not seeing any jump out of the orange bear or first Fridays or anything like that. Sports games, we haven't seen any of that. It has calmed down a little bit since last week, since the start of school. I've not seen as many kids go home. I think that the state kind of relaxed a little bit of the rules, allowing nurses to be nurses and kind of diagnose, maybe assess the total of the role and make them not for the headache or stomach ache or symptoms. Sort of throughout that, what's the reason for that? Not necessarily, well, those symptoms aren't that necessarily always an illness. It could be a symptom of anxiety or being upset or having a hard day or not eating or drinking, breakfast or something like that. So we're seeing less kids going home this week than we did last previous year. It's not good. We still continue to call everybody that we can, when everybody can get ahold of it. It's a huge amount of symptoms. The state has put together new metrics, give us a little bit of guidance. Obviously some of them that was a little bit flawed, but other than that, we're keeping up fairly well with everything. PPD requests have gone way, way, way down. Rarely get called for masks or sandpaper anymore. Just so you're aware, for you, for your interest, the state department of health received around $14 million for COVID related expenses for IT for each county health department. Whitley County has been designated $99,000. So what you saw on the proposed budget is for the planning and building department and the health department when it came to software upgrades. I think you've got to do around $3,000 plus hours. Hoping that all those software upgrades for those two departments will be taken care of with this grant. It's probably something to include in the next part of our budget for this community. So we're confident that we should be able to realize all that money. Plus some stuff that's possible in the new downstairs for the meeting rooms. Cameras and the microphones and things like that. So hopefully all of that will be covered because that's something that we can do to promote online viewing and not any personal viewing. So hopefully that will help our budget process a little bit this year. Any other questions?
Question for Scott. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Okay, we have one other little matter that we need to take care of. We need to adopt our salary ordinance for the budget. What would you? Any ideas? Anything you want to? You just said, Jen, if you get it finalized and get it taken care of.
What are the budget numbers looking like, Jen, as far as what our overall total budget is and what the projections, how do they compare?
On the sheet that you actually have, it should give you that one.
This is still current good information. Okay.
The max levies to the DL, our DLGF rep gave his estimate, what he thought it could be. And then the actual DLGF gave their estimate. I think if we're somewhere in between, that would be good. And take like the average of the two and use that. But I gave you examples for both.
So the budgets that we've got right now, what's, what's the, what's that number? Or am I not seeing that at all?
That's, that's for county general. So you want for everything? That is just county. That is just county. So our entire, for all of the DLGF review funds, which is rainy day, general reassessment on public safety, or at least rental payment to pay for this building, community services, which is council on aging, byway, local road and street, Cune Bridge Health, the new jail tax, county 4H and Cune capital development, the total of all those funds with a 1% increase for employees would be 21,587,825. And for all of our other funds, it's 7,653,250.
I distributed to the council the latest estimates for COVID prediction for social security and that, those just for the record, from multiple sources, that's still between 0 and 1.2% is the, is what they're estimating for social security. September 15th is when that hard number will be more solidified. Even if we go at a 1% increase, that's $200,000 or more of deficit spending. And I'm just concerned about significant deficit spending at this point in time. We have no confidence that 2022 will even be as strong as 2021. As far as state funding.
What's in county general right now, Dale?
Almost 4.6 million cash.
Does that include the rainy day fund account?
It does not.
What does, what's in that?
6,500.
A portion of next year's this might be a question that you probably can't even answer, but what do you anticipate a budget that we're putting forth that will be unallocated funds that will go into county general?
Well, it is hard to say because I, so you're asking what you think will be on our cash page at the end of this year going into next year?
Well, no, I guess I'm asking what will be, when we get that, that tax revenue, what will our county general account look like in January? That's probably an impossible question.
I, I would say we'd be close to 2.5. I'm gonna guess if we keep the expenditure rate that we're going.
To 3 million in addition to what we would have maybe left over from this 4.6.
No, I would say that would be what we would have on, on cash page and what we didn't expense.
Okay. And so what I'm asking, yeah, what I'm looking at is what part of next year's tax dollars that are coming in, do we expect to be unaccounted for going into the county general for unexpected expenses for next year?
Just because, I know it's hard to
No, I, I get it. I, I understand that. And I probably should have gotten with you sooner for that question, but
Can we pass a salary ordinance and amend it next month or not?
Well, and honestly, I don't, I mean, I'll have a salary ordinance for you next meeting, depending on what you guys tell me right now. Because at the next meeting, you know, the budget has to be adopted. So I need to know final numbers so I can have it on the ordinance for you guys to adopt, plus the salary ordinance and all the final numbers that you guys have decided.
And that's a matter of, it has to be done at the next meeting, but it's a matter of you having the timeliness of having it ready for us to sign. So if we even came to a decision that, well, let's look at no increase, let's look at 1% increase, and let's look at 3% increase, then you could have all those sets of information ready for whatever decision was made theoretically. Although it'd be extra work for you, right?
The only thing of it is we'd have to come back in and sign. Cause she wouldn't have it ready by, once we made the decision next month, she'd put it together, then we'd have to come in and sign.
Because I'd have to go, if you guys changed it from what I had and, and the computer, it would take me quite a while to get it all changed. And then you guys would have to come in at some point and sign because I think I have so many days after adoption to actually get it submitted to the state.
If it's reasonable, I would really like to have those August or September 15th numbers before we consider cost of living. Cause I don't want our employees to have a reduced buying power. But at the same time, most of our employees received significant increases last year besides the dollar amount that was given. So I don't want us to increase our deficit to give raises per se, but I do want to maintain cost of living.
So is everybody in favor of that? Just wait till next meeting?
Could we plan a special meeting for the 22nd? Which is two weeks. That would be well after the 15th deadline. It would give you an opportunity to get that in for, try to answer that question that I asked. And to get that information to us, it would probably be a very short meeting.
What time for you guys?
Eight o'clock.
That give you sufficient time to make a little bit of a special meeting?
Yeah.
Is it okay with everybody? We'll have a special meeting on the 22nd at eight o'clock. Okay. Okay, we have the matter of the minutes from our last meeting. Okay, we have a first, there's a second. John, second?
And I do have one question, just for clarification. There were seven council members that voted on every issue with the exception of the last paragraph and the matter of other business, and that's a 6-0. Did someone have to leave before we took that vote?
I think I did.
All right. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the minutes? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Other mafos, the same, let it show that it passed. Okay, at this time, is there anything the public would like to ask the council? Pretty quiet.
Yes, I'd like to do an update on the justice system study. So if you guys are informed, talk about a four-phase process from phase two right now. Two weeks ago, we, the judge is sheriff.
Sir, hate to interrupt. Could you come up here and state your name and start over again?
I'm Jim Christie with Performance Services, and we're currently conducting, as you guys remember, the justice system study for Whitley County. As you guys recall, we were in a four-phase process that we're going through. We're currently in phase two, which is really, we finished the data collection and now we're doing the interviews. Two weeks ago, we interviewed the judges, community corrections, probation. So we went through all the interviews. Last week, we were in the facilities, the jail, the sheriff's office, of course, community corrections, and we're doing space assessments, code assessments, facility assessments, HVAC, that kind of stuff to kind of go through and see what you guys have from that standpoint, where you're at. The next step in phase two is a visiting session with the committee, so to speak. So that we can talk about different programs, think that you guys are considering. We're pretty impressed with the next level that you guys have kind of put together in Whitley County here. But there's a lot of other things that we've talked about with the judges, prosecutor. So that's kind of where we're at. We're in the phase two of, of a four-phase process. So it's really just a reminder to you all where we're at. And then we'll get into staffing and space programming, things like that and the charrette process. Again, as we said earlier, we heard earlier, we don't know where we're at. It's still in the discovery phase right now of what is needed for Whitley County. But we're getting close to that, getting all the final data collection and interviews done so that we can kind of start getting with your team and say, okay, what is the best solution for Whitley County? Just wanted to give you guys an update.
And I do believe we talked about approximately six-month timeframe.
Yeah, I think we started two-year timeframe. I can't remember exactly when it was. June, July. So I'm, we're, we're guessing in sometime in December for design threat process, something like that. Not quite sure. That ever flows depending on meetings, you know, it's trying to set up meetings can always be a challenge if you've got a busy schedule. We've been fortunate to get quite a few of the interviews done, but we're still thinking the December timeframe.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it. Councilman Barrett, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Councilman over there?
No, I don't. But that asked Georgia question about where, did we have the deficit jail?
Yes.
Is that, tell us.
Well, it's, it's being investigated right now. We're, we haven't got too many details on that, but we did have
Right now it's just investigating.
Yeah, yeah. State police are investigating at this point.
Councilman Warner?
I have nothing.
Councilman Hodges? And I have nothing. So we stand adjourned.